We're going to begin tonight with Article 22. Before we do that, there's a couple of announcements that I should make. There will be a special registration on April 23rd, 1997, for all residents who have not previously registered to vote. The town clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM that evening. I would remind you again of the election next Tuesday night. Is it Tuesday? Tuesday night? Tuesday, all day Tuesday. Until 8 o'clock Tuesday night. And there will be a special town election on May 13th, 1997. I would point out, for those of you who have already pointed out to me, that I am wearing a very loud colorful tie tonight. This is the one I wear on the last night of town meetings. And therefore, we're going to try hard to get this thing through tonight, so I would ask you to be succinct, brief, and to the point. Before we start, I would just like to make one other minor point. It has to do with parliamentary procedure, and I want you to be clear, or I want to make myself clear, on one point. Often, people rise to a point of order. And I want to tell you legally what a point of order is and when people can rise to it. They really can't rise to it for any other purpose. According to Town Meeting Time, which is moderator's bible, it says, "On a point of order, a voter may rise to one or more of the following questions, and no others." One, is the speaker entitled to the floor? For example, is he or she a non-voter, or a voter who has overstayed the time allotted by the bylaw, or by the meeting? Two, is what the speaker's saying indecorous, or whatever that means? Frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure? Or three, is any pending action frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure? It also rise, we think the moderator has made some gross error in these areas. And you rise and say, "Point of order." You can interrupt the speaker. You don't have to wait until the speaker is finished. After you say "point of order," you have to be still. I will recognize you and say, "State your point of order," and you do that. A point of order is not what you do when you want to make a final statement on something before we vote. That's really not what it's for. And it does say here, "Moderators should be very harsh in these circumstances." Have you got the whip, Don? I did want to point that out because sometimes people get confused when they're waiting to speak, particularly when someone else has moved the previous question. And I can understand how they're frustrated, but unfortunately, it's part of the process and you have to live with it. And we do that in this town generally extremely well. Now on to Article 22.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, where are we?
Here. Can I just make that sound better?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Yeah, my name is James Elders. I'm a member of the Acton Earth Day Committee. And I just want to make a quick announcement. I've been handing out those green flyers on the meeting on Monday and Tuesday for the Acton Cleanup Day. It's actually been rescheduled because of the expected poor weather this weekend, so I just wanted to announce it's rescheduled for Sunday, May 4th, and invite you all to attend. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Article 22, Dr. Harding Barrett, moves that the town appropriate $120,000 for the purpose of a school facilities feasibility study, including cost incidental thereto, and that to raise such amount, $120,000 be transferred from free cash, and that the town meeting authorize a school committee to appoint a local school building committee, which will follow the guidelines established by the Commonwealth and the town of Acton. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Harding Barrett.
I have a big surprise. We need space in our schools. The schools are terribly overcrowded, and one just needs to walk through and see how large our sixth graders look, all cramped. They look like giants. A committee of staff and parents have worked two years to produce an analysis and recommendations. The space committee that originally was formed was followed by the ABC, which is our Advisory Building Committee, which includes school committee members, members of the finance committees, and selectmen from both Acton and Boxborough, parents, a representative of the teaching staff, and two central office administrators. The ABC has been looking at enrollment projections, potential building sites in the two towns. They've visited other school systems, which have been expanding. They've inventoried current space, and they've been looking at the vision for the future in terms of modulars. The next step is a feasibility study, to determine where and what kind of space solutions makes sense for us here in Acton. I'd like now to introduce Nancy Banks and Sharon Gardett, who have worked very hard co-chairing the Advisory Building Committee.
Thank you, Pam. I'd like to thank the indulgence of the town meeting to allow us to go tonight. The reason for that is we have a series of three articles, and the presentation of the three articles are all related. As Pam said, in Articles 22 and 24, we are requesting what we hope will be the first series of articles for a school expansion and upgrade of our existing buildings. In Article 22, we are requesting money for a feasibility study of the Acton Public Schools, and in Article 24, we are requesting funds for the study at the regional level. In Article 23, we deal with the current needs and how we want to address our immediate space needs. Like, I'm sure some of you in the audience, when we reopened the Marion School, we thought that our space issues would be resolved. Unfortunately, or fortunately, due to the change in our programs and what we see as an increasing enrollment, we are forced to look at the needs for additional space. In 1996, the school committees formed the Advisory Building Committee, which we refer to as the ABC, to specifically address some of the issues. Oh, I'm sorry, Don. Oh, thank you, Don. The ABC was specifically charged by the school committee to determine what were the appropriate enrollment projections that we should use to address our space needs. And Sharon and I will each talk to that, to the specific enrollment projections we're using at the local and the regional level. Secondly, to address the educational and space alternatives. Given those enrollment projections, what's the best way that we can meet those needs? What's the cost, focusing on particularly the flexibility, ensuring that in the same way the school committee and the town made wise decisions regarding the use of Marion during our period of declining enrollment, to ensure that similar decisions are available to us as we go into the next century? The community reactions. Is this a plan that meets the needs of the whole community, not just those of us who have children in the school system? And finally, to look at our own educational values. How can we build a space that meets the needs of our children and their needs as they go into the community? We formed a series of subcommittees. The committee formed a series of subcommittees to address the specific needs. We served as a committee of the whole to look at our educational vision. And you may recall, last fall, we had presentations by Ted Seizer, and now in November, we also held several forums with parents and with staff to address those issues. Site visitation, essentially looking at the best practices. We've discovered from our conversations with the state that in fact, many other school districts are faced with the exact same problems we have. Good news for us is that we get to take advantage of a lot of their experience, and we intend to do that. Site selection. If we were to decide to build a new school, where would we locate the school? In fact, the school committee does own a parcel of land on Arlington Street that was purchased over 20 years ago in anticipation of building a sixth elementary school. After the purchase, unfortunately, we discovered the land did not perk. We had hoped that 20 years later, using different technology, we might get a different answer. Unfortunately, in tests that were conducted this winter, it appears the land still does not perk. Finance. How much is this going to cost? And we have, working under the direction of John Phelan from Boxborough, who serves as the finance, we've been able to get some ballpark figures of the space that, of what the additional space would cost. Space inventory. How did we fit 400 more children in these same buildings 20 years ago than we can fit today? And that's really was the essence of that question. Working with an architect, we actually looked at plans of each of the schools, and then worked with representatives to identify how every space in our schools are used, and what options we have for increasing the number of classrooms. Sharon will speak in a few moments to that issue. And finally, but most critically, how many children should we be planning for in the future? Then I'm going to ask Sharon to talk about what our findings were as they related to the Acton Public Schools.
Okay. I'm going to begin by briefly discussing the conclusions of the enrollment subcommittee to see what's driving the space problem. Now, the enrollment subcommittee considered many things in coming up with their projections. They included building permits that have been taken out in both towns, the build-out potential, given current zoning, both NESDEC and MAPC projections provided by independent consulting firms, and historical population and the historical school enrollment in the town. All enrollment numbers, by the way, are Acton, for this presentation, all enrollment numbers are Acton students in the Acton Public School System. Doesn't include choice students, and it doesn't include Acton students who are in out-of-district special education placements, because they're not actually in the buildings. This graph, this graph shows that over the past 20 years, Acton Public School enrollment peaked in 1974 at 2,708 students. 12 years later, in 1986, it decreased to a low of just under 1,600 students. And since then, enrollment has climbed to the current 2,232 students. Now, in this period, the population of Acton has actually been relatively stable. It's fluctuated less than 5% for more than 20 years. Nowadays, there are many more houses in Acton. We've noticed all the developments. We've all noticed the developments going up in town. But the increased number of houses has been balanced by a decreasing family size. In the 1970s, the average household actually held 3.5 people. This has decreased now, down to 2.7. Demographers generally predict that this will continue to decline. It's a function of the changes in our society, rather than increase up to 3.5 again. In order for it to increase to 3.5, we need to be seeing a lot of four, five, and six children family like we used to in the past. It's just not so common anymore. So the Acton Public School, as the graph shows, the Acton Public School enrollment rises and falls as families age and renew in our community. Currently, we're in the middle of this rise here, and we're seeing the effects of both new development and renewal. Young families with elementary school-aged children buying homes from empty nesters who are moving out of town, or moving to smaller houses. The Acton Public School enrollment is predicted to increase, to continue to grow, to a peak of about 2,412 in the year 2001, 2002. Next, I'll show what space the elementary schools currently have and how that's being Currently, there are 102 classrooms in the five Acton Public Schools. Of these, okay, of these, 5.5 are sped, no, 5.5 are CASE, the yellow ones. Four are sped resource rooms, and four are used for other specials: technology, computer labs, art, and the Community Education Office at Marion. This leaves 89 regular classrooms, which are used for sections of students. In addition, the Acton Public School System has two integrated preschool classrooms, which are currently in the Blanchard School in Boxborough, because we don't have room for them. It's unlikely that they can continue to stay in Boxborough, because Boxborough's going to need the room in their elementary school for their growing elementary population. So currently, there are 2,232 students in the Acton Public Schools, plus 29 choice students. The average class size is 24, and it ranges from 20 to 27 students in each section. By the year 2001, the ABC enrollment projections present 2,412 students, an increase of 170 or so. And this is in grades K through 6. With the current class size and programs, and assuming that we bring the integrated preschool back to Acton, we'll need 112 classrooms at that point. It's a shortage of 10. As part of this process, to help the Advisory Building Committee, the school committee prepared guidelines for optimal class size and programs. These guidelines are a maximum of 20 students in grades K through 3, a maximum of 24 in grades 4 through 6, plus four special rooms per school for art, music, technology, special education resource room, and breakout space for all the classes. If we also include the CASE classrooms, we've heard before tonight, that's the Concord Area Special Education Collaborative, and it's a group that serves the needs of low-incidence special education children, well, children with low-incidence special education needs. And it allows the communities to group together, to hire staff to help these children, who have fairly severe needs generally, in a much more cost-effective way than if each town tried to provide staff to handle the children that they happen to have. So if we include all those things, the much smaller class sizes and the extra special rooms in each school, then we'd need 145 classrooms by the year 2001, and that's a shortage of 43 from what we have at the moment. I think it's important to talk for a moment about what was actually done in the '70s, when we were at the peak the last time, and we had 2,700 students in the schools. Then, the educational program was very different. It's not the first time you've heard that. Students were sitting in desks, mostly listening to the teacher who was talking at the front of the room. Now, we have shifting group activities, often no desks, only tables. Plus, there are many hands-on activities in the classroom requiring extensive equipment. In addition, in the '70s, there were no CASE classrooms. CASE didn't exist until, it started in 1976, and the CASE classrooms entered our system in the early '80s as enrollment was declining. In addition, SPED was a very limited program. It really had not ramped up yet. Services were provided generally in small rooms, not in classrooms. So if you take all these changes into account, there are 11 more classrooms available in 1974 to service regular education students. In addition, at the peak, in the early '70s, many people in town were very concerned about overcrowding in the schools, to the point where they were pursuing the process and beginning the process of constructing a sixth elementary school. Fortunately for them, but perhaps unfortunately for us, before they completed that process, enrollments began to decline dramatically. So that's where we are now, and where we could be in the future, given current programs, or given the optimal programs of the school committee. Now, I'm going to talk a bit about the three alternatives that the Advisory Building Committee has identified for providing more space at the elementary level. Each of these would provide on the order of 20 to 30 classrooms, which would put us in an area around here. So it means that at the peak, we would not be meeting the school committee guidelines, because we anticipate that enrollment will decline again. So it seems reasonable to compromise somewhat for the peak enrollment period by having class sizes somewhat above these guidelines of 20 K through 3 and 24, 4 through 6, but hopefully, the class sizes would be smaller than we're seeing today. So it would be something around here, in addition of about 20 classrooms. The three alternatives that we're looking at are, first, a sixth-grade annex near the junior high. This would serve approximately 400 students and contain all the necessary facilities: a gym, a library, cafeteria, et cetera. It could share kitchen facilities with the junior high. This would pull three to four sections of students from each elementary school, freeing up rooms in each school. This also offers the option of eventually converting to a regional middle school, at a time when that is a viable alternative for each of the two towns. The next alternative, number two, would be to build a new K through 6 elementary school. This could possibly be done either at the Wicks Lumber site or on the Morrison property, which we voted to purchase last night. It would probably be built for either two or three sections per grade. By the way, if it was built on the Morrison property, it wouldn't take all 30 or 30 acres. It would be, could be done at one end. That doesn't have to be decided now, though. It's a possibility. It would be discussed, I'm sure, at town meeting. I didn't put it as the only alternative. Anyway, this would allow the town to, the advantage of, one advantage of building a new elementary school is, as enrollments decline, it would allow the town to eventually close the McCarthy Town building, which is really quite old and not up to the standards of what even the parents of students there would like to see. The third alternative is to build additions at existing elementary schools. Each addition would be big enough for one new section in each grade, so it would have at least seven classrooms. This would probably be done at Douglas, or Marion, or possibly at McCarthy Town or Gate. And this would have the advantage of allowing us to upgrade our existing facilities using the State School Building Assistance Bureau funds, because if you put an addition onto a school, they require you to bring the entire school up to the standards of new construction. But they subsidize you doing that. Either of the first two alternatives, excuse me, either of the first two alternatives would also include some limited upgrades at existing elementary schools. Possible upgrades could include converting the cafeteria to a cafeteria at McCarthy Town, so that it can do dramatic and musical presentations there, and it would be then consistent with the other schools, or building a library media center at Marion or Douglas. Now, warrant Article 22, ask for $120,000 to hire an architect to perform a feasibility study to determine which of these three alternatives are possible, practical, and preferred. The feasibility study would include conceptual designs and preliminary cost estimates based on those designs. It will provide sufficient information for the preliminary submission to the School Building Assistance Bureau once an alternative has been selected. The request for proposal will be written with language allowing the feasibility study architect to continue to design the project without a subsequent RFP. I'll wrap up now with a few general conclusions of the Advisory Building Committee. Peak enrollment moves through the system as a wave, first through the Acton Public Schools, and then through the junior high, and then the high school. We should not build for simultaneous peak enrollment at all the schools, but rather at a lower level. Peak years will be handled by a combination of class sizes somewhat above the school committee optimal levels, but hopefully below current level, portable classrooms, and relocation of some services, particularly at the region. Nancy will touch on that in a few minutes. In addition, the quality of existing space must be considered, as well as the need for new space to house our students. The new space should be flexible to accommodate reconfigurations of grades or use as an enrollment wave passes through the schools. And the design of any additional space should be consistent with the values of community and recognition of individual differences, which was identified through the Advisory Building Committee visioning process that many people in town took part in. Supporting Article 22 is the next step in providing adequate and flexible space for educating our students in the next century. I hope you'll vote for this article.
Comments from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen support this article. I would present a slightly different rationale, but before I would do so, I would like to congratulate Sharon, who was excellent leader of the finance committee last year and is doing very good work for the ABCC, as is Nancy Banks, our former town manager. It's a very active and interested committee run by, or guided by, these citizens, with many other citizens participating and the staff sitting in. Now, I think it's important to realize that some excellent work has been done by one of the subcommittees on enrollment studies. They've avoided what I consider to be the trap of prior enrollment studies, where you took the present trend and just, oh, I might add that I'm the selectmen's representative in this group. So we collectively, but particularly the enrollment subcommittee, has done some excellent work. There's usually a lot of enrollment projection questions when you talk about expansion, and they've avoided the trap of just taking the present trend and extending it out forever, which the town has flirted with a couple times with some dangers. And there were a number of people involved in that. I'm sure I don't know who all they are, but I do know a couple, so I'll name them, and that's Phil Zelico and Mary Ann Vogel from the Boxborough School Committee. The Boxborough people have been very active with the ABC, and since they've just recently built a school, their input is quite helpful. There is, I'm satisfied, a space problem in the schools, and it's going to get worse. This space problem exists even before the recent reduction in the class size guidelines, and it is largely, at the local level, in my view, a result of the expansion of educational space functions, as was indicated. And at the region, it is that in part, and I would submit it's also in part because we had reduced enrollment in part, and some laws has operated, and not all of that can be rolled back. Now, the process was begun about a year ago by a citizen group that the schools appointed, forgotten the exact name for, but it was space and enrollment study. Came up, as my memory serves me, with about five alternatives for construction. It went to school committee, or I guess, first it went to staff, and then it went to the school committee, and as I recall, we came out of that with about 11 alternatives, which were somewhat bewildering. But a number of them involved the potential of a second middle school, which would apparently have been cited in Boxborough, but that became obviously politically inaccessible to us. So the question was, what sites are available in Acton? And this process and the need for a feasibility study, I would submit, is largely driven by site identification problems. There was some interest, of course, in the Arlington Street site. I see Ed Richter sitting in the back, who had a lot of connection with the purchase with that. Ed tells me that that night at town meeting, as he was going to the rostrum to move its purchase, somebody stopped him and said, "By the way, it won't perk." And it didn't. And of course, some people didn't know that history, and so there was some disappointment when we suggested that the records indicated there'd been a desperate effort to get it to perk, and we went back, as was indicated. And I understand the digging of the holes, they indicated they'd have to wait till the ground dried out and the water receded in the holes before they could see if it would perk, which seemed to be self-evident problem. There was a thought that we could go back to a plan that was before you, and many of you will remember, in 1974, when they passed over an article about citing a sixth elementary school on the Conet grounds. And we tried very hard to see if we could make that work for a new freestanding building. I had a site option subcommittee, and we had a couple architects, including Ed Alderman, who commented several times during this meeting, I don't see him tonight, and made several layouts, but the rules have changed since 1974, and there's an unfortunate intermittent stream, unfortunate where it's located, and some wetlands, and you just can't put a new free building there, which has led some focus back to the central campus. The idea of making the space flexible as the peaks move through is an excellent theory, but I would submit that the alternatives that have been mentioned here are not anywhere near as clear-cut as they would look at first glance, and thus, the necessity for moving over into a professional study for an amateur study. The sixth-grade annex near the junior high school, excellent concept, but it rapidly grows into a full-size school on regional, local school on regional land, and there are some Boxborough problems with that. The new K-6 elementary school, if it goes to Wicks Lumber, which we haven't discussed, the acquisition of that property, you've got site acquisition costs, and the site is smaller than the state's Rules of Thumb, which are not immutable for an elementary school. And the question of how many elementary schools and to what extent that you add needs to be looked at very carefully. My understanding that the intent is to have this feasibility study done in time to come to the special town meeting in the fall, which I understand the schools will request, to hire an architect to do preliminary design, to be in June of 98 at the School Building Assistance Bureau. A very ambitious schedule, and one is impossible unless you vote this article affirmative. So the Board of Selectmen recommends the article. Thank you.
I think the finance committee made their comment.
Yes. The finance committee wisely agreed to recommend this article.
Okay, now we can have discussions from the town meeting members. I'll recognize you first, Ms. Gresser.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just some quick questions. You noted during the latter party of your presentation, the rapid decline in enrollment in the middle '70s. Can you do some projections as to how rapid the decline in enrollment will be after 2001? Now, that sort of, you know, stops very... Now, that sort of, you know, stops very quickly and really doesn't.
Well, the reason it stops at about 2005 is because after that, you're talking about children who are not yet born, and it's a little difficult to do that.
But have you, but have you any reason to believe you won't see a continued decline?
Actually, what the enrollment committee, they've looked at the historical trends, and what it's been is big waves, well, relatively, in school enrollment, it's been relatively large waves. We went from 2,700 to 1,600, so it's a decline of a little more than 30, 40 percent. And they predict that as things seem to be more stable, they predict that it will continue to move in waves, but the waves ought to be smaller.
Okay.
There are more houses in town now. Family size has already dropped. It's unlikely to go from 2.7 to say, two. That's, that's very small families.
I, I would agree, but although, as I think you also noted, it was expected that the trend would continue to drop below 2.7. It's already gone, I think you said 3.5 to 2.7, and the demographers suggest it will drop even further.
But I don't think they're talking to two. I think they're talking to 2.6, maybe 2.5, but you know, there's a, there's really a practical limit to how low it's likely to go.
Yeah, the details are, you know, or maybe the devil is in the details. The basic thing is that we really don't want to sort of build a new school for 2002, and then suddenly find we're going to decline down. That's obvious.
Absolutely, and that's why the Advisory Building Committee has taken a lot of time and effort and intends to talk to, the Designer Selection Committee would talk about being sure that it's flexible space, so that it can be used for whatever purposes are appropriate if enrollment does decline.
I think there are other ways of looking at it, which is you pick a solution which is, you know, pertinent to the specific needs. But anyhow, that's just the first point I would raise. The second point, the Arlington site was mentioned, and complaints were made that it won't perk. I thought that, according to Selectman Hunter last night, the issues of perking, you know, really went away these days with package treatment plants, et cetera. Plus, I thought we spent a rather large amount of time last night, you know, talking about sewers, which got voted, and even without the sewers, I thought the school system was going to have its own treatment plant. So why is perking a problem?
Well, even with, even with a treatment plant, you still have to discharge the water into the ground, and you need a place that has sandy enough soils that the water goes away. The Arlington Street, you cannot do that. You would have to pipe it away to somewhere else, and it's not on this, it's not in the Middle Fort Pond District sewer, sewer district.
So the comments that were made last night, that the Middle Fort Pond Sewer District was going to support the school systems, in fact, wasn't quite accurate.
No, it will support the central campus. It won't connect to Conant, it won't connect to Douglas and Gates either, but it will support all of the central campus. It will support all the regional schools.
But again, instead of rushing off and either buying Wick's Lumber's land or some other thing, I would have suggested that one of the things we possibly should look at is using the current site and extending the sewer ring to cover the current site. Let's, anyhow, just, just a suggestion, you know, let's, let's try to get this town's plans integrated. The third thing... Sorry, the, the third thing is, what considerations of cost are going to be given to our architect or our guy that we're going to hire to study these things? You know, is he going to be, you know, is he going to be told, "We want, you know, a minimum-cost solution"? Is he going to be told, "Hey, you've got an open checkbook, we want the, the greatest palace you can possibly dream of"?
I would say he's not going to be told either of those things. I think that we're going to aim for something in the middle and probably closer to minimum cost than a palace. It's, the, the state has guidelines on what they reimburse per student, and we'll probably go, as, as an initial thing, as an initial start, by those. And, and it includes enough money for classrooms and whatever extra space you need. If you put on additions, it can be, it depends how much you end up spending, depends on how much renovation your existing schools need. But that's one of the, no, I think it will be a reasonable thing. Boxborough just built the school, I think they did a reasonable job. You can pick architect's costs as one of the things you include in the request for proposal criteria, and it's been included.
Again, again, the architect's costs, I don't think are the big thing, is what the architect produces and what that's going to cost to build.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I, I, you know, I, that, again, was the question. I think, given all of the expenses that the town is going to be faced with in the not-too-distant future, I would suggest that we, without being particularly, you know, mean, we really try to, you know, keep a strong, strong, tight fist upon the purse.
If I could just respond to that, one of the issues that the school committee specifically wants to have addressed is what the community reaction is. We want to build a school that meets the needs of the community, and cost is clearly a community consideration. And so we plan to make an extensive effort to bounce the ideas that we come up with in the fall, to bring that out to the community and to get community reaction, and one of the things we'll be talking about is cost.
Good, thank you.
A gentleman at the back.
Good evening, Bill McInnes, Woodchester Drive. I just have a couple of questions, maybe you can help me with, between the relationship of the articles. The summary for Article 22 says that it, it applies to both the school committees, I assume that means local and regional, and the school systems, which I again assume means local and regional. And yet we have Article 24, which applies to the regional district. So is Article 22, in fact, the summary incorrect, and that this applies only for the Acton schools?
Yes, that's right. This is just for the local schools.
So it would be inappropriate to ask Boxborough to share for the cost of this study?
I think they'd be unlikely to agree to do that.
Okay. Then, but then, in the same general idea, when you're talking about feasibility for schools, this is maybe a little bit of a diversion, but has there been any consideration toward amending the current cost spread between capital acquisitions of 5% Boxborough, 95% Acton toward feasibility?
We had an animated discussion, because we had members from Boxborough and from Acton, and as you could predict, there were strong feelings about the idea of changing the regional agreement. And where it really comes down at the moment is, in order for each town to consider changing the regional agreement, they both need to have a compelling reason to change it. And at the moment, Acton has a, has a space problem at the elementary level, and eventually the region has some problem at the junior high at the moment. But Boxborough is very comfortable in their new school that they just built. They do not have a space problem at the moment, and they still believe that they will not have a space problem. There are people in Acton who are certain that Boxborough will soon outgrow their new elementary school. If that's the case, and it could be in four or five years, then it could be, you need a time when both towns are, are looking at a need to change the agreement, and then you can negotiate both the operating discrepancies and the, or the imbalance in the operating payment and the capital payments. But, so yes, it was considered.
I, I just suggest, ma'am, that may be something that the Acton citizens would be very interested in.
I'm sure they would.
And you might, as a negotiating point, point out that last night at town meeting, we just, we, Acton, just voted to sewer the regional school district with no Boxborough contribution.
Yeah.
So we just gave them a little gift. Maybe then you can also help me with, with Article 23, because the chart you have right behind you on the, on the Vиграф machine?
Mm-hmm.
My eyes are not that good, but it, it appears that the enrollment level for 1997, where I assume we are now, is, is roughly very similar to the projected enrollment for like 2002, 2003. And with Article 23, we're, we're talking about using modular classrooms up until 2001, when any additional space would be available. But isn't it the case that if we can use modular classrooms up the peak, I mean, why wouldn't we just stay in modular classrooms, and then in 2002, we're back to our current population, which obviously fits in our current buildings?
Because if you think about it, one, one reason we wouldn't, you could do that. One reason you might not want to is that as this peak moves into your regional schools, you're going to have a problem there. It's already somewhat overcrowded at the junior high now, it's going to be getting worse. It's not a problem yet at the high school, as Nancy will show in a few minutes, but eventually that peak's going to move through there. Because we're not planning to start a project at the high school for several years, you could simply move these modular classrooms to the high school, and it will help you get through the time there until your peak is there. So they will be well-used, they'll be worn out. But that's, I think that's the next article.
Right, I understand. I'm just trying to say, perhaps instead of as part of feasibility, it almost sounds like you could carry the entire peak with modular classrooms.
That would be one option.
But that was not on your list, I guess that's what I was trying to suggest, of actually things that you were going to study.
The, we, one of the reasons why we're not considering that, you're right, is not one of the options we're considering, is because the schools today, we have class sizes that we view as being too large. We have some elementary class sizes at 28. We would look at an ideal average class size at those levels of 24 students. So we would like to design a plan which enables us to bring down class sizes. Whether we are successful in achieving the school committee guidelines, we're not, that is something that the school committee needs to debate more, and, and we will be making, bringing back a proposal to the town meeting. However, in addition, and this is more evident at the region, there are a lot of other programs and services we offer in all of these schools. So it's not just the classrooms that our children sit in, but we need to provide rooms for special education programs, something like the cable TV studio, a print shop that we run that supports certain student activities. There's a wide range of other programs that can be relocated to various schools. They don't necessarily all have to be, most of them are today or in the high school, there's no reason why they have to be in the high school. But over time, as that peak moves through the junior high and the high school, we envision some of those programs moving out into the elementary school. So long-term, and then the final reason why we also need to consider permanent space is that long-term, we need to think about buildings that are going to last for 30 years. The McCarthy Town Building is a very beautiful building, but in terms of serving children, it probably doesn't have a 30-year life. So long-term, we need to come up with something that's going to allow us to maybe continue using that, but maybe not to serve children. So that's the other issue that we're trying to deal with in this plan.
Okay, thank you. One last question, and you may not be able to answer this, but I'll give it a shot anyway, and it's okay if you don't have an answer. A few years ago, we were discussing regionalization with Maynard, and at the town meeting for that discussion, someone asked, I, I believe the plan at the time was to bring all the Maynard students to Acton and close the Maynard High School. And someone at town meeting asked, wouldn't that cause a space problem in Acton? And the, the school board's representative answer was, "No, because the junior and senior high schools are currently only at 82 percent of their design capacity, and no projections show that additional space will be required in the future." Obviously, that, you're saying that projection was, was wildly inaccurate. Have you done anything to understand why that projection was inaccurate and ensure that this projection is more accurate?
Actually, that projection was remarkably accurate. We said that there would be, we would be running out of space in the junior high about the year 2000. It looks like we are going to peak at the junior high in 2005. You have to remember that we have serviced a good number of choice students over the last five years. Those would be the spaces that the Maynard students would have taken up. As a matter of fact, many of them are Maynard students at the moment. We also said that there was not going to be a space problem at the high school until 2005. It looks like the peak of the space problem by enrollment projections is going to be about 2009. So, and until 2000, I don't remember what the choice numbers are, because I don't have them right in front of me, but we have declining choice, and that, thus that would have been the Maynard students. Now, it is true that enrollment across the nation has gone up faster, especially in a town like Acton. The projections are probably, were probably pretty good within a year or two of the ones you were given at the regionalization.
Thank you.
Mr. Cadillac.
Moderator. I would like to learn a little bit more what you mean by the term flexibility, which I find very intriguing. Could you expand on that?
Flexibility. When we talk about flexibility, what we mean is that we can relocate spaces amongst various buildings. In the same way that when we closed, it means two things, all right? One thing is, it means we are able to relocate spaces. Next year, or the year after, we anticipate having to move the central offices out of the junior high into another location. Now, because of the space considerations we currently have, we'll probably have to locate them someplace off-site. But long-term, what we would like to have is the flexibility so that as the elementary population, should it decline as dramatically as it did in this cycle, we would house other programs such as extended day, a preschool program, a technology resource center. We would house those in an elementary school versus a high school where they're located today. So we're trying to design spaces that's not just used for classrooms, but can be used for other types of support services. The other type of flexibility is to be able to use the space in the same way we use the Marion space. That that building, we kept, we kept it in good condition so we could reopen it, but we were able to earn an income by renting it out. So that's what we mean by flexibility.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I was hoping that's what you meant, because I think it is possible, none of us can tell, that time will come. And I do remember being at this town meeting when we were discussing the sixth elementary school, and the projections went straight up, and by now, the population of Acton was supposed to be somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000, if I remember correctly. Just as a small digression, I think we hired a consultant for good, hard cash, who put a ruler to the thing and drew a straight line, and most of us could have done that for a lot less. But anyway, these projections tend to be somewhat unpredictable. So should the occasion arise where whatever space we add becomes excess space, it would be really nice, and I think it's pertinent to this study, the $120,000, to have some fairly concrete ideas on how such space could be used for other than-school purposes. I know when we were trying to select which of the then-five elementary schools to close, which turned out to be Marion, there were constraints on each one of those buildings, which made it very difficult. The problem, not to dwell on it, but the problem with Marion was the middle of the school campus. There's only certain things you could do with it, you couldn't put a, you know, a high-traffic industry or something in it. So I hope the 100, part of the $120,000 would be spent on getting some fairly concrete ideas in, for the possibility that some of this extra space becomes unnecessary for schools, and how it would be used for income-producing purposes. Thank you.
Mr. Katie.
Couple of questions. First of all, where do you think the central office is going? You have any idea at this point?
No. No, we, we haven't, I, we have not begun those decisions, that part of the decision. We just know that we're probably at that point where we, that is, as, as next year begins, that'll be on the agenda.
Simple no would be okay.
Simple no.
Sorry, preferences, yeah, it's okay.
All right. Dory mentioned a point you brought up, that you said that the Wick site was a little bit under the size configuration, yet you were only looking at 20, if you were looking at just the elementary school, you're looking at a 20-room elementary school, which is about approximately half the size of a Conant, or, I don't know.
It's approximately the same size.
Same size as a Conant school?
That's 21 rooms, 21 classrooms.
So it's about the same, so how many acres was it to need for?
Actually, I, we talked to the state representative, and they said that the Wick site is, is adequately sized. It's too small for a middle school. Then you need over, you need like 25 acres, but it's 11 acres, and he said that was within what they would accept.
I just, I was just, I have been in the study, looking at land in Acton, we just acquired 7 acres today. And we, I looked at the Wick site, I have the document at home, I, if I know you were looking at it, I bring it to you. I have the actual broker's document from Wick's. It's $975,000 as is, without any environment, E21, any environmental studies. There is oil tanks on site.
Mr. Katie, I, I think, I think we're going a little bit long on this issue, and we're delving, excuse me, we're delving into history a little too much. We're here to talk about a feasibility study, and I think some of this stuff is a little on the peripheral side to it, so please.
Well, I want to bring out a specific point. I, there's also cars buried on that property from back in the history, and environmentally, you've got a problem. I suggest, having studied the land in Acton for acre, you know, 11-acre site, you know, last year myself, the best location you have is your existing central campus. Now, Dory brought up the point, you have a problem with it at Boxborough in terms of it being a regional land. I think it's a very reasonable point that flexibility says it should be the central campus, and enable to move you around in a central location. Having it turn into various types of buildings, whether it be a... types of buildings, whether it be a elementary school, a sixth grade, or a middle school. Now, the man just brought a point. My main point I was going to make is that Dory mentioned that thing about Foxborough. We just voted in the septic system for the whole campus, which I think is a very nice bargaining chip, to go to Foxborough and offer as a, say, hey, we don't need problems with you. This is our best site. We should locate, can we exchange that? Is there a thorn in that argument?
If I might speak to that, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Moderator.
I have been one of the loudest voices at renegotiating the 95-5, so I'm going to shock you. We figured out proportionally what Foxborough's cost would be for the capital portion, just for funsies, of installing the regional school sewer system, and it came to $2,034, which didn't seem to make much of a bargaining point.
And in response to the other issues you brought up, I think those are the very reason we're asking for this feasibility study money, to have a professional look at this kind of thing.
All right. Now, there's one other point in terms of, the logic would tell you that building one building is going to be cheaper than building additions onto five buildings. But I understand, and the people here should understand, that one of the things you're doing there, which is a good use of this money, I think a substantial amount of the money that you're using out of the $120,000, is to look at all of these other buildings and what you can do to expand them and capture state money at the same time, which would help you in terms of upgrading those facilities to meet current standards. Am I correct?
Yes.
Mr. Cady, what we're doing now is we're giving them help on what might be in the feasibility study, and I think there's a better forum for that. It isn't the Florida town meeting. We're here to talk about whether we should vote $120,000 for a feasibility study or not, and all of us, no, I'm telling you right now, you're going beyond the bounds of what we can discuss here tonight. So please, get on the point and bring your remarks to a close.
Fine. The point is, if you're going to study one location, it may only cost $60,000. If you have to study all of these options, it's going to cost $120,000. And I wanted to hear, I didn't hear anything that made me think that you should spend anything but looking at the central campus. Unless there's other reasons, and that's what I wanted to hear. There are other reasons.
There are advantages and disadvantages to each of the three alternatives, and we're seeking professional help to help us determine which should be the overriding concern. For instance, at the central campus, one major problem is that if you have the sixth graders there, you're adding another transition for the Acton sixth graders, and in addition, then the Acton sixth graders are arriving at the junior high, or at the annex to the junior high, a year before the Foxborough sixth graders. And I'm sure that this would not make it easier for the Foxborough seventh graders when they arrive, because the Acton sixth graders have already, you know, formed their new social structure. At the moment, at least, the Foxborough students arrive at the same time, Acton students are melding together from the five elementary schools.
Is there space in all of the five additional buildings to be able to expand? Is it worth spending the money?
Yes, it's worth doing.
I mean intuitively, is there enough space, is there enough septic capacity at the other places?
These are the sorts of issues that are going to be looked at by the professional.
But you should know that ahead of time. There is enough septic capacity to expand at Conan or isn't there? I wouldn't do a feasibility study. I think that we have enough engineering.
I don't believe Conan is on the list of ones that we're considering.
I think that one of the issues that we're considering here is that we want to make sure, in this program, that we look at all our schools to make sure that they're going to meet our needs over the next 20- to 30-year period. The schools that we're using today were all built 25 to 30 years ago, and they've served us very well. We want to make sure these schools are here. So we need to have those schools looked at to see what kinds of upgrades we need to make. Now, that's the kind of weighing we need to do. How much is an upgrade versus does it make sense to also, at the same time, put an addition on the school? Which schools makes the most sense to put the additions on? Septage is an issue. Parking is an issue. There's a whole bunch of issues, and each of those will be addressed. We want the architects to look at all five of the elementary schools. We already know some of the answers about McCarthy Town. Tell us, if you're going to put additions on, which school should you do it? What is the most cost-effective way of doing it?
That's worth $500,000, what happened to him, whatever he did.
At the back.
Yes. My name is Kathy Campbell, 21 Minute Man Road. The reason I rose is in response to the comment of the gentleman who was at this microphone before me in reference to continuing use of modulators rather than adding new permanent space. I was teaching at Tru's Berry High School last year, where they have modulators that were originally installed at their peak enrollment in the 1970s, and they were in the process of going through re-accreditation, and they were in danger of losing their accreditation because they had continued to use modulators, and the modulators were leaking, they were inappropriate space for long-term use. Modulators have a shelf life, and it's also true that many of the buildings in Acton, if looked at carefully 10, 15, 20 years from now, also might not meet then standards of accreditation. And it is definitely worth our while, I think, at this point, to proactively look at all aspects of the school space issue in one feasibility study with a reputable architect.
Mr. Mackey, I guess, and then you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to make an observation here. First of all, I'm 100 percent support and plan to vote for it as a citizen. What I am a little bit afraid of is that we are seriously underfunding a very serious study. And I, even if you came in here with double or even triple that number, I would support that. And I just advise you that it may be, you know, you get what you pay for.
In this case, I think one thing that I did mention in my talk is that the request for proposal will be written so that the architect can continue with the design, and in fact, then they compete and do this portion of it basically at a loss, to have the right to do the full design. And so, we have talked to two architects who have said that this is a reasonable amount to ask for this study, given those conditions.
Please, be very, very careful.
Well, you still have a peer review, and you do something like that.
Sharon, why don't you work me into this once in a while? I don't think all of these questions, some of them are rhetorical, they all don't need to be answered. The gentleman at the front.
Yes, I have a question on, David Hill, Ten Brucewood. I have a question on the amount of funding. If I could look ahead by two articles, I noticed that the funding for the Acton-Foxborough Regional School District is $28,500, a significant amount less than this. And even if, assuming that Foxborough contributes 5 percent, that means that the total is about $30,000. Why is the funding four times for the elementary schools what it is for the regional schools?
We're asking at the elementary level for five schools to be looked at versus two schools at the regional level, and they're all located, and the regional schools are all located basically on the same site, so there's less work to do.
Mr. Edelman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move the question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off the debate, say aye. Oppose, say no.
Point of information, I think this is right. You might chastise me on this.
I probably will, but yes, go ahead.
I just want to make sure what I'm voting on. What I'm voting on is the proposal is just to consider these options. The Arlington Street option has been discarded. We're not going to ask this person whether we could sewer or whether we could do something else.
I think it's fair to certainly rise to that, to ask what we're voting on. So Nancy, if you will describe that very quickly.
Thank you.
You're absolutely correct.
We are voting on a feasibility study to look at all five of our elementary schools and to determine what alterations, renovations should be done to meet our space needs. In addition, we are asking the architect to look at three options we have specifically recommended, and finally, we are offering the architect the option of presenting us with a whole new option, should there be something we have failed to look at.
Okay, we voted on cutting off the debate, I believe, so now we will vote on the motion as originally read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries. Article 23. Dr. Harding Barrett moves that the town raise and appropriate $300,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing modular classrooms for the Acton public schools, and that to raise such amount, $300,000 be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Harding Barrett, to your motion, please.
We now need an instant solution to our local space problem. We have a slide? Yes. Well, we did have a slide. We do have a slide.
Which one?
And in the slide, we have 89 rooms. As you can see from our slide, we have 89 rooms, and we need 93 for next year. There is no space left to cannibalize. Love that word. We have visited the schools, and we've seen how crowded they are. And we need a solution, and I'm going to tell you all about the solution via our superintendent.
Thank you, Pam. One of the comments that I want to make in reference to a previous question is that modulators are not acceptable by the SBAB as permanent solutions. So we are looking at these as the instant and temporary solution, certainly in terms of our students. What we're planning to do, assuming that you give us permission, is to place a modular classroom at possibly one of the three schools, at Douglas, McCarthy Town, and Merriam, definitely at one of those three schools, and then a fourth modular at one of those three schools. So one of those three schools would have two modulators, and the other two would have one. We know we have a classroom need at McCarthy Town for the sixth grade. We're not sure about the integrated preschool. We're not sure about an additional kindergarten, and that's why we're thinking about placing them in the wide range that we're suggesting. We're also thinking that it is possible that for some of these modulators, we will not have regular classrooms, but place the classrooms in the building themselves and use the modulators for a support function like a library. The library, for instance, at Douglas is a regular classroom, and that could be moved to a modular, and then that classroom could be used for students. These modulators will be placed right next to the buildings, and we've had an architect look at the buildings to tell us whether it is possible to cite these modulators next to the buildings. The students would use, and the faculty would use, the central, the core facilities in the building itself. There are no facilities for water, for example, in these modulators. They're very attractive. It's not a very clear picture. We scanned it from a pamphlet, but you can see that they look like regular classrooms. Once you're inside, you really can't tell. And when they're well-sighted, they're very attractive, as we all know if we've driven down the road toward Foxborough. In addition, and separate from the appropriated budget, the community education is planning to purchase two modulators, which we will cite at Conan School. Those modulators will be used for the extended day program, which is currently at the high school. That will open up some space at the high school and also create an appropriate placement for those two programs. So actually, if you vote this article, which we hope you will, you'll see six modulators, not four, although the appropriated budget will only pay for four. And finally, we have placed enough money in our utility budget so that we have taken into account what will be needed by these modulators. They are a turnkey operation. They come, and they're ready to be used as soon as they're installed. Thank you. So I guess I should summarize. I'm sorry, we never did tell you the bottom line. The bottom line is that we're requesting $300,000 for four modulators for next year to meet the immediate problem that we have, that we have to deal with next year.
Very good. Comments from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen supports this article.
And the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee also recommends this article. Purchasing the modular classrooms now addresses the current space crunch at the elementary school. We'll need this classroom space for the Acton public school students until the additional permanent space is constructed. After permanent elementary school space is constructed, the modular classrooms could be relocated and used for regional classrooms or administrative purposes.
Thank you. Comments from the town meeting members, and gentlemen at the back?
Hi, Bill McInnes, again. This is real quick, and I'll start off by saying I think the modular classrooms are a fine idea. And as we all agree, they're a temporary solution. I was certainly intending that they be a temporary solution. My question is, are we buying these, or are we leasing these? Because if they're temporary, it would seem to me that unless we really beat on them, we should be able to lease them.
We are buying them. They last a very long time if we take good care of them. And in fact, as has been said several times, we intend to keep these for uses in the interim before we have our final solution. So we are buying them. We can eventually sell them later on, but we are buying them.
But, I'm sorry, isn't there a final solution in like two, three years?
But it's a K-12 issue, so the final solution for the elementary schools, we hope, will be in three years. But then there's the solution that the junior high school needs and the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Other comment? Yes, Mr. Edelman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the all-in price, 75K gets you one of these landed, usable, furnished?
Well, it's turnkey.
Turnkey.
Walk right in, and you have it ready.
And the issue of plumbing has been resolved with the plumbing people?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I use these, unfortunately, I also have the need to use these where I work, and I think buying them outright is probably going to prove to be cost-advantageous in the long run, but I'd just verify the plumbing requirement if employees are going to be in them. Not so much for students, but the law regarding employees.
There is no, let me give you to Bill.
The six that we're going to put out to bid to purchase, again, the two that community ed is buying will have plumbing over at Conan. The other four will not, so there'll be no water in the other four. They use the water in the core facilities. We are putting them out to bid in two different ways. One for new, and one for refurbished, which, if they're available, might be 20 to 25 percent cheaper. As you can imagine, there's a lot of demand for modular classrooms, not just in Massachusetts, but all over the country.
I mean, I think this is a good plan for now, and a good bridge to a longer-term solution in the K through 12, and I recommend this.
Other comment, the lady at the front?
I have a question in terms of the ones that are used for extended day. Who's paying for those?
Community education is paying for those.
Community education?
Yes.
Out of what funding?
They are a fee-for-service operation that we run, and there is therefore a fund balance.
So the people that use them for the extended day will be paying for them?
No. The people who have paid to use community education courses, to take community education courses, to participate in community education activities, have paid certain fees. You take a course with us, you pay a certain fee. And the fee covers the outright cost, plus it covers a little addition, which then becomes part of the fund balance that runs the program. And out of that fund balance, the community education quite often gives a gift to the school, or pays for certain things for the schools. They bought the computer lab at Merriam School, for instance, a couple of years ago. They have purchased pieces of equipment for the school. It's a business that we run, that the profits of the business are then turned back to the school district. And it's out of that profit, that fund balance, that community ed is able to buy those two modulators, which then are part of the property at the Acton public school.
Thank you.
At the back?
Hey, guys. 431 Main Street. My understanding is that the availability of free cash affects our ability to borrow in the future. I'm just wondering if taking $300,000 out of there will have some negative effect on potential projects in the future. potential projects in the future.
Who would like to answer that question? Anybody on the Finance Committee? David?
I'll address it. We have factored the numbers from these four articles into our projections for future free cash. And although I felt the numbers at 3.6 percent, now down to 3.4 because of articles that have been voted already, was a little low, I felt it was still within the acceptable region. And the remaining level of free cash is one of the many things that allow you to borrow at a decent rate. So I'm still comfortable with the level that we have at this point, and in fact, do recommend this article.
But given the level we are, we should be watching our free cash position a little more closely now, correct?
We're watching it very closely.
The second question may be sort of basic, but we have three articles where we're talking about a total of $428,000. Why isn't this part of the school budget? Why is it, why is it coming up separately?
Who would like to answer that?
Well.
Yes, Dr. Gentlemen?
We have, for the last few years, made it a practice to request capital financing as separate from our operating budget. We feel that our operating budget is very, very slim. It meets the needs of operating, but not of expanding, not of adding, and actually not even of deferred maintenance, which has occurred in the past. So it has been a decision taken in connection with the Acton 2001 process and the Acton Leadership Group, which includes the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee. It's been a decision, as the entire town looks ahead, to think about capital outside the operating budget.
Thank you. Mr. Steinhebel, did you have a comment on that as well?
Yes, I do. The Finance Committee has encouraged capital items like this to be addressed separately, and one of the reasons is so that the town meeting could vote on them and have input into whether they feel they're really necessary or not.
All right, I see no one else standing. We will vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 23, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article 24. Ms. Stuntz moves that the town raise an appropriate $28,500 for the purpose of funding the town's share of the school facilities feasibility study, including costs incidental thereto by the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District, and that to raise such amount, $28,500, be transferred from free cash. Do I hear a second? Mr. Stuntz?
My part in this is easy. Here's Sharon and Nancy. Thank you, please. I wanted to, under this article, we're requesting the money for the feasibility study at the region, and I just very briefly wanted to show you what is, we project happening there. Basically, we're following the same exact trend that Sharon talked about at the, for the public schools. The area in dark shows the number of choice students that we have in the system. And you will note that we had a peak in 1975. We actually went down to our lowest level of, in the junior high, of 530 students. Today, we have 644 Acton-Boxborough students, and we have 71 choice students, for a total of 715. Those choice students, as Pam and Lee's mentioned, we're no longer accepting choice students at either the public schools or at the junior high. So the number of choice students will diminish very quickly at that level, and we expect that this will peak at about 1,000 students in the year 2004. So what about our classroom space? In 1975, as in today, we had 45 classrooms at the junior high. When the junior high first opened, we housed the central office in the junior high, as we did today, but basically, all the other rooms were available for classrooms, so we had 41 classrooms. Today, due to the fact that we've added a computer lab, and we have brought back in district several special education programs, which used to be offered only out of district, we now have 39 classrooms available. As we talked about, the central office, if we relocate the central office, that will give us an additional four classrooms. By the year, now, just to step back, at the junior high, to determine the number of classrooms, because we have teaming, it's really an effect of teaming. Today, at this level, we have seven teams consisting of 100 students. In the year 2001, we expect that we will have nine teams. At our peak, we expect we'll be at 100, I mean, 10 teams of 100 students each. At, in 2001, given the current program, no changes, no reduction of class sizes, we expect that we will require an additional six rooms over and above what we have today, a total of 51 classrooms. If, in fact, we adopt the School Committee guidelines, which provides for smaller class sizes, we would have a need of 59 classrooms. So that what we hope to address in the feasibility study is to look at how the best way to address those needs are, and to come in with some specific recommendations as to the actual number of classrooms we would need, probably somewhere between these two. At the high school level, we show the same, the same type of trend. In that case, the black area again shows our choice students. The, at the high school, we are still, next year, projecting 10 additional choice students, and all of the choice students, the 71 that are in the junior high, also will go through the high school. So we don't expect those numbers to go down as quickly as we do at the junior high. We expect the numbers to peak in the year 2009 at about 1,900 students, which is about the same level as we had in the late 70s. And at the high school, again, in 1974, we had a total of, as we do today, a total of 79 classrooms. In 1974, 67 of those classrooms were used for classroom spaces. Today, only 52 are, and we talked about the fact that we have other uses. Some of those other uses include computer labs, special education rooms. We have two faculty support centers, one for our technology. We have an academic support center, which students can use during the day to receive tutoring. We have a print shop. The cable TV studio is located in this building, and several years ago, some of you may remember that you approved funding for a world language lab in this building. We have met extensively with the principals of the two schools to talk about which classrooms could be put back into school use. Although the superintendent doesn't entirely agree with that, we may be able to bring back, we expect that we could transfer approximately 10 of those services or those programs to other locations and bring back classrooms. It would basically allow us to meet our needs through 2001. The specific deliberations as to which programs we transfer and the pace at which we do that will be made by the School Committee, and we will be reviewing that over the next several years. So that in this article, we're asking for $28,500. The total cost of the feasibility study is $30,000. Boxborough will pay $1,500, which is their 5 percent share.
Mr. Hunter?
The Board of Selectmen also supports this article for the same reason as I stated in the article two back.
Miss Goddard?
The FinCom also supports this article.
Mr. Cadillac?
Question. Do these feasibility studies also anticipate some projections on what the impact of adding all these classrooms may be on the then yearly operating budgets?
The, that will be part of the, of the study, yes.
So there will be some numbers. If we add 20 classrooms, that means 20 more staff and so on, so we'll know what the operating budget may look like in the year 2001?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Any other comment, Miss Gresser?
A quick question. I assume that the two studies are going to be strongly coordinated. I mean, is it going to be the same guy doing them?
Yes, in fact, we will, because it's two separate legal entities, we actually have to make it two studies, but it will be, there will be two designer selection committees consisting of the same people, and we will hire a single architect to do those studies.
And he will be instructed to do the better, as and, he or she, my apologies. They. The firm will be instructed to do an integrated study.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 24, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Let's see, we did 25 last night, we did 26 last night, we did 27 last night, and we'll move to Article 28. Yes. Go ahead. Great. The motion under Article 28. Ms. Tavernier moves to adopt the amendments to the charter as set forth in the article, except that in Section 4-2, the length of term for the Acton-Boxborough Cultural Council shall be three years. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the culmination of a local League of Women Voters project began in 1994. B. Perkins, Connie Huber, Loretta Roscoe, and other members of the League helped review the town charter to bring it up to date. Since its adoption in 1982, it had not been given a close look, except for amendments. We've done nine different amendments over the years, but primarily in the section that has the appointment powers of the Board of Selectmen, changing the names of committees or the terms of office or the number of members. So this was a first comprehensive look, and we've worked together with the League, the Selectmen, and a member of the FinCom, and hopefully, everything on here is self-explanatory.
Ladies and gentlemen?
The FinCom recommends approval and change. We've had a dialogue with Board of Selectmen, and reached an agreement about the key points, which, as far as the effect of FinCom, we're providing the information about the budget to the FinCom, and modification of the charter concerning replacing the operating mandate requests with the operating policies and procedures. We are concerned that processes in cross, and that cross-multiple departments be documented and clear decision-making be, and the decision-making process be clear, and we're comfortable with the changes and recommend approval.
I see no one standing? Up, now someone is? Yes, at the back.
Mr. Moderator. I'm Julian Berry, President of the League of Women Voters, and I just wanted to let this meeting know that we reaffirmed our support for this article after all the work of the members that's been, as you had noted.
Thank you. Other comment? All right, all in favor of the motion as read under Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Well, let's see, Article 29. Dealing with the animal control? This generally is a very exciting article in town meetings. I don't see the fever pitch with this that I've seen in past years. Over the last 20 years, we've debated this thing three or four times. The debate has never been particularly illuminating, but it's been interesting. The motion will be, Mr. Kabokop moves that the town amend Chapter E, Section 24 of the town bylaws as set forth in this article. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Kabokop.
I'm going to confine my remarks to be brief, and I don't have a slide, so to show my commitment to brevity, I'm going to stand here and talk to the article briefly. And basically, last year, it started with, I guess, the power article, and the article was moved on the floor, and there was a lot of confusion. The Board of Selectmen said, look, you want to put an article on the warrant, come to us first, make your pitch, we will help you, you know, word the article, construct the article, and we'll help you get it on the warrant in a sane, legal way, so we don't have to worry about the legal wording of the article and the motions and all that. And in fact, a citizen took us up on just that admonition, and wrote us a letter and said, I have a suggestion. You know, I'd like to put an article on the warrant having to do with animal control. Came in to visit the town manager and worked out the wording of the town, with the town manager as far as the article is concerned, and worked out the wording, we worked out the wording with town council with regard to the motion, so everything is legal, well, and well-controlled, and you can see also in a, done in a pretty sane way. The basic gist of this article is that it's looking to broaden a little bit the current bylaws, just to require that animals, although the wording in the article is animals, I'm sure we all know it's primarily, I guess, directed to dogs, be under control and not be a hindrance to the quality of life in our town. And in that regard, the Board of Selectmen, you can be assured, will not take a proactive role with regard to that. That is to say, this bylaw, if passed, will be used as the basis by which the Board of Selectmen will get involved when citizens come to the Board of Selectmen to get involved. And we hope, we hope as a board, that these problems that would be addressed by this bylaw will be worked out among the citizens of the town, among themselves. Although we do have now a bylaw, if passed, that would give us a bit of a basis from which we can take some action. I also point out, there is an MGL, a Massachusetts general law, that deals with this. It's a general law, Chapter 140, paragraph 157, that deals with this subject as well from a state perspective, and is actually far more stringent than our bylaw. So having said that, I'd like to, with the moderator's indulgence, ask the town meeting to hear first from the citizen who brought this to us, Mr. Jesse Liberty and his wife Stacy, to explain and their logic for this bylaw.
Mr. Liberty?
Much scarier from this position. I want to begin by thanking the town manager and the Board of Selectmen for their hard work on this proposal, and thanking all of you in advance for your patience. I will be very, very brief. The short story is this. My family moved into our neighborhood in North Acton almost two years ago, and, and what can I say, Acton's a great town. Everything we heard is true, the schools are terrific, the neighbors are friendly. We have noticed, however, that there are a few dogs who wander onto our property, and at times, this has made it difficult for our kids to play in their own backyard. More troubling is that we've seen dogs running on Route 27, which is dangerous both for the dog and for the drivers who must avoid them. We were surprised to learn that Acton does not require that dogs be kept under the immediate control of their owner. We thought every town has such a law. Acton, in fact, does not. We talked about proposing a warrant article, and our friends essentially said, what are you, nuts? It seems we keep underestimating just how contentious an issue this is. I think most people realize that this article was offered in good faith by people who love dogs. I hope that we can discuss this proposal as neighbors and as friends, and that either way, win or lose, we can move on without anger. Let me start by saying that I've owned dogs off and on throughout my entire life, and I will tell you very, very briefly about one, if I can get this mic to sit still. About 10 years ago, I had a dog which was half German Shepherd and half Australian Dingo. I taught Dingo to walk to heel, and she did it well. When I said, no, Dingo, heel, she would stop what she was doing, she would come straight to my side. Despite that training, when we went for a walk, I kept her on a leash. I felt she was safer, and other folks who didn't know her and didn't know how gentle she was, felt safer when she was on a lead. When I see dogs running on the road, I worry about the dog, and I worry about the drivers who might swerve to miss that dog. I asked the town manager, Don Johnson, to help with creating a warrant article which could balance these concerns. He and I crafted a proposal which does not require that dogs be kept He and I crafted a proposal which does not require that dogs be kept on a leash, only that they remain under the immediate control and supervision of their owners. All that this proposal says is you cannot open your door and let your dog wander the roads of Acton. To me, that just makes common sense. I know, however, that there are some folks who disagree. Let me say that again. I know that reasonable people can disagree about this. Perhaps there are some who are against this proposal because they long for the days when Acton was a rural community, and if you let your dog out, he could walk all day without imposing on anyone else. There are others who must think that neighbors should work this out without recourse of law, and these are good points. Here is my perspective. If your dog is out on the road, he is a danger to himself and to others. If he's running on someone else's property, that is unfair to your neighbor. If you let your dog run free, you are neglecting your responsibility. Now, that's a very old-fashioned word, responsibility, and I guess I just believe it's a dog owner's responsibility to know where his dog is and what it's doing. Most people are pretty reasonable. If you call up your neighbor and say, "Your dog was running in the road," or "Your dog scared my kid," they'll apologize and take steps to correct the situation. There's no need for a bylaw, no need to get huffy, just neighbors talking things out. But now and again, you meet someone who slams the door in your face. No discussion, no opportunity to ask for help or cooperation, just get off my property and slam. This article gives you the opportunity to get that person's attention. This proposal is offered from one neighbor to another. It is not meant to be divisive or to be offensive. It is meant to be a talking point, so that we can find common ground. This proposal is an attempt to say, "Let's be reasonable together. Let's respect each other, and let's protect each other's rights and concerns." I believe this article will help keep our roads safe, and our kids comfortable, and our dogs protected, and I urge you to vote for it. Thank you very much.
Comments? Mr. Kabakoff?
Mr. Moderator, after discussion and debate, the Board of Selectmen recommend this article.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee sees no financial impact to changing the wording of this bylaw. We therefore do not wish to make any recommendations.
Mr. Richter at the back?
I think it was James Thurber that wrote a thing that it was unnatural for cats to be so constrained, and there being animals just as well as a dog, and an amoeba, or salamander, or a frog. I think some of these other animals should be exempted from the conditions that are intended for dogs, because it's entirely unnatural for their whole psyche.
Gentlemen at the back?
Ed Geithner, four thirty-one Main Street. I think this is sort of a blunderbuss approach to a pop-gun problem, but I guess my biggest problem is that the wording of the article doesn't seem to reinforce what Mr. Liberty said about it. I mean, it really does seem to be a leash law, and looking at it carefully, there's nothing in there that says that it's going to be used reactively. And it does seem to say that if I'm walking on woodland paths in the Spring Hill Conservation Area, that I should have my dog on a leash, and I just ask Town Council if my interpretation is correct or not.
Mr. Callahan?
The bylaw says the animal must be under the complete and effective control of the owner by means of a leash or otherwise, and I think that that means if you go for a walk with your dog in the woods, and he is reasonably obedient, and you can keep control of him without a leash, that's perfectly appropriate.
So, the other means could include under voice control. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the front microphone?
Two points. First, the earlier comment about cats being unnatural, it's unnatural for cats. I would point out, and the annual, the town report for this year points out that there were sixteen people bitten by dogs and two people bitten by cats. It seems that both types of animals have the same predilection. Secondly, I did a little research, and looking back at some of the town reports, in fact, I looked at every five years from nineteen forty-seven to nineteen ninety-seven. If I look at the number of calls to the dog officer, which is listed quite nicely in each of those reports, that in nineteen forty-seven, the number of calls was one per forty-four residents per year. And if you look at this year's town report, actually, it's the ninety-six town report, you'll find that it was one per forty-five residents for the same, for fifty-year period difference. It would seem to me there are precious few things in this town that have changed, not changed, over a fifty-year period, so I question what problem we're trying to solve here. Clearly, if there is indeed a problem, we would see a rapid rise in the number of calls to the dog officer. It doesn't appear to have been the case. And I do want to note again that Mr. Liberty, in spite of the wording of his article, which refers only to dogs, clearly, his article speaks to all animals. That would include dogs, cats. I happen to have chickens. I don't know whether they need be leashed. There are...
If they leave your property.
Well, they're free-range chickens. They occasionally... They occasionally wander into our neighbors' yards, and they suffer the predations that most chickens are subject to, by the local dogs, cats, and wildlife, some of the four-legged foxes and things of that nature. Certainly, I would like to think that we could all resolve these kinds of problems by going to our neighbors, and certainly, we've made the attempt to do so when our dog has been less than a true good citizen. Somehow or another, this article seems to put more, make it easier for someone to avoid dealing with it in that personal fashion, and merely to do, as someone pointed out earlier, merely slam the door in your face. I would hope that we would reject this article.
Dr. Donald?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for giving me the liberty to speak tonight. Aside from the fact that I don't, I think the wording of the amendment is very cumbersome, not to maybe be poor grammar, it's owner or keeper and not under the complete and effective control bothers me. But aside from the fact that I think the wording is poor, I think the article is redundant at large and to the injury or nuisance of others, which is our present bylaw, I think is more than adequate. Thank you.
Katie?
No, that's a software programming language. You're not reading it right. If you went to, it took C in high school, you'd understand that. Anyhow, if you're going to have a requirement to put your dog under your control, why don't you say "dog" in the article? There are many parts of Acton in which we're allowed to have many more animals than dogs. And there are many parts of Acton that have different zoning, and the amount of animals we're allowed to have per that zoned area is substantially different. In North Acton, when you have R-eight zoning, you're allowed to have, I could have two horses, I could have a couple of sheep, I could have pigs, chickens, wild-range chickens that could go out, which would have to be leashed along with my five cats. So, I think your point, the point is well-taken here, that you need, if you want to say something about dogs, why don't you say "dogs"? The way you've written it, there are many people in town here who are in rural settings. There's a lot of, in North Acton, that is all R-eight zoning, so why don't you say "dogs" within R-two or village districts? That would be much more sensible. If you said R-two, then you would cover areas like Minutemen Ridge and Robbins Park, and places where there's a concentration of people, and you've got fifty homes on less than fifty acres and fifty dogs, you'd need controls. But if you've got areas in town where we have four acres per home, we don't need the same controls as you do, so you should be, there should be an ability for you to say "dogs" within R-two and village districts shall be kept within boundaries. I don't think, including Spring Hill Conservation Area, in which a butt's land where my dogs run to, and they, guess what they do? They kill coyotes. My dog kills, and I've had a dog several years ago killed by a coyote. That's why I bought a bigger dog. And the reason why I got that, and I'll tell you another story. I'm really restraining myself here. Pretty admirably. He has the right to tell me about his dogs, so I'll tell you. My dog was killed by a coyote, and I had a fawn killed three years ago on my driveway by a pack of coyotes in this town. Now, my daughter was very upset about having to come home from school and walk up the driveway and see a mangled fawn in our driveway. That's happening today. I've had neighbors who have had cats killed by coyotes up in North Acton. Now, the only way I saw to keep them out, and to keep the raccoons out, is to buy a big dog and let him run, and I bought a dog that's designed, everybody's seen Sebastian. He's been at every football game. It's a big white dog. Well, his main life, goal in life, is to protect sheep in a household, and he'll go out, and he keeps the coyotes away, and my neighbors are all happy now because they don't have, they're not losing their cats, and, you know, they're not losing their dogs, and he's out and wanders around, and he doesn't go on the road. He goes into the woods and keeps the coyotes away. So, come back next year with an amendment to the bylaw that does what you want it to do, specifically dogs in R-two zones or village districts, and I would vote for it. But the way you've got it written here, it doesn't make sense in the English language, and it applies to every situation, which, we go on and on and on.
Gentlemen at the side microphone?
David Hutton, thirty-six Jackson Drive. I've lived in Acton for over twelve years. Four years ago, I moved to Jackson Drive. I immediately became aware of my neighbor's pets. They have two very high-strung, easily excitable, sometimes aggressive Afghans. In the past, the dogs have been allowed to freely roam the neighborhood, and in particular, my property. I've never seen the owners walk their dogs, either with or without a leash. I've had several discussions with the owners requesting them to keep their dogs on their property. The discussions were fruitless. I was completely ignored. After one dog tried to break through the screen door of my porch in an effort to get at my son's cat, I called the Acton Animal Control Officer. The Animal Control Officer called the owners, and the dogs were chained for about three weeks. The same scenario was repeated several times over the years. Complaints were made to the Animal Control Officers. The owners were called. The dogs were temporarily confined. In November of last year, the dogs trapped my son's cat under the car in my driveway. Before I could get outside, my eight-year-old son went out to rescue his pet. One of the dogs began to chase him. The dog did not bite him, but it was not for lack of effort on the dog's paws. The Animal Control Officer was called, and the dogs were once again chained. At this point, I would like to give you a better understanding of the dog owner's frame of mind, my neighbor. This is a letter that they sent me four weeks after their dog attacked my son. Note that this is the only correspondence that I've had from them in two and a half years. Dear Mr. Hutton, I am writing to request that you confine your cat to your yard. He slash she comes over to torment our dogs, and with their present confinement, I do not believe that this is fair. Our animals will be kennelled through twelve seven ninety-six. This should give you time to train your cat.
So then?
After several months, one dog, the chaser, remains chained most of the time, while the other dog is oftentimes free. Further conversations with the Animal Control Officer made it clear that nothing further could be done under the current town bylaw. Fines could be issued, but they would probably be ignored. I was told that I would have to wait for the next serious incident before any further action might be taken. Even then, the Animal Control Officer was dubious that any action that he might initiate would be effective or enforceable. The owners are currently not under any obligation to keep their dogs confined to their property. The current town bylaws concerning pet control make two major assumptions. First, it is assumed that most pets are neither a threat nor a nuisance to their neighbors. I find this assumption to be true in most cases. Secondly, it is assumed that neighbors and pet owners will use common sense to negotiate their differences. Reasonable owners should take responsibility for their pets' behaviors and take appropriate actions. Reasonable neighbors should not make impractical or frivolous demands on pet owners. I also find this assumption to be true in most cases. When both of these assumptions fail, the town bylaws come into play. The bylaws must be written in such a way that they are concise, effective, and enforceable. The current bylaws concerning animal control are none of the above. While I do not support the passage of a leash law, I do support the passage of this article. Remember that this could be your child, this could be your grandchild. Please vote yes on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't have any pets, so I'm clearly missing out a dimension on Acton life, but I do have a daughter. I have a seven-year-old girl who is mortally afraid of dogs. Nice dogs, dogs on leashes, dogs not on leashes. But I'm not, I'm also not, I'm not for this article, because I don't see how the word change from the existing prohibition against animals to go at large to the injury or nuisance of others is materially different from an enforcement perspective from the proposed language. We've been at soccer games on Jones Field and other places in town behind the fire station, Great Road, I guess, Little Great Hill and all that, and the dogs roam freely. And this is not an attack on our police. They probably have other higher priorities, but I imagine the scenario would be identical no matter what we pass tonight or not pass tonight. I think enforcement is the issue. When there's a problem with an animal roaming, using the existing bylaw at large to the injury or nuisance of others, which in that category, I would put dogs that are chasing six-year-old girls running up and down trying to play soccer, taking the soccer ball, taking the water bottles with calls to the police that go unanswered, or to the last gentleman saying, so I guess I need someone to tell me what the response is under the current bylaw and how the proposed language would change it.
Mr. Kabakoff?
I'll take a shot at that. The current bylaw, as you read, requires that the animal be at large to the injury or nuisance of others, and to allege and defend that an animal is injury and nuisance to others is hard to do. So, in honesty, what this change does is broaden the bylaw. It takes out the requirement that you must prove that an animal is an injury and nuisance, and instead, prove that it was simply out of the control of its owner. Consequently, it gives the bylaw, quite frankly, a little more power in that regard. Does that answer your question?
It clearly answers my question, but I guess administratively, from the perspective of the town, would the response be different from the police who enforce, from the appropriate town office which would enforce this bylaw?
As I indicated before, the response would be a reactive one, at such time as the Board of Selectmen had ascertained that clearly the neighbors hadn't been able to work this out among themselves. The bylaw simply is written to the point where somebody has to come before us and prove that an animal was not under the effective control of the owner, at which time, the Board of Selectmen can insert itself into the conflict according to the bylaw, and clearly we would do that, I'm sure, through the Animal Control Officer.
Yeah, I understand your point. I don't want to belabor this, but I'm having a hard time understanding how an allegation, since this all happens after the fact, that an allegation to the police that an animal was not under the complete and effective control of said owner versus merely being a nuisance, I don't, I guess I don't see a big difference in practice, but maybe we need something in the middle, because this now... Sorry.
In fact, there is a big difference.
Okay.
To prove nuisance is... To prove nuisance is a little bit, is much more difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Lady at the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Randy Wong, 13 Notre Dame Road. I am a runner in Acton, and I have met many of your dogs on the streets of Acton. And some of your dogs are in control, and I thank you for those of you who keep your dogs in control. But I want to tell you, there are many dogs in this town who come out after me when I'm running in front of your houses. They bark at my heels, they threaten me and intimidate me, I have to frequently stop my run to yell at them. And when you yell out your doors and windows, the dog's not going to hurt you, that doesn't make me feel better, because they've already violated my space. Some of you also have dogs who are very friendly, and they come running out after me wagging their tails, and they jump on me when I'm running because they want to play, or they run in front of me and trip me, or they run next to me and pose a threat to the cars because the cars now have to brake because they're running in the middle of the street. When I go by your house, I don't run in your property, I don't bark at you, and I don't try to bite you. And when I run by your house, I expect your dog to do the same with me. Thank you.
The lady at the front microphone.
Hi, I'm Bob McGinsky from Wampanoag Drive. I'm here to represent, I guess I can describe myself as a first-time in a town meeting, and sort of a silent minority. I have a big front yard and a big backyard, and I love gardening. On weekends, you will see me out in the garden doing all the mighty gardening. I also do a lot of picking up dog dirt, clean out dead animals in my yards, and clean up toys and things left by dogs. I do not have dogs. My neighbors have three dogs and two cats. My other neighbors on the two street over own two big dogs. The dogs use my front yards, my backyards as their playgrounds, their meeting room, their bathrooms, and their excavation site. Several times for the last two years, I came to my neighbors, asking them politely, nervously, and very apologetic. I have no results on that. Twice, I have called the animal control, and there's no help. There's no law, and the explanation from the animal control officer is that if a child came to my yards and defecate or dug up my lawn, I can call the police. But there's not much he can do about it, except that he can talk to my neighbors to be neighborly and considerate. Of course, I'm here tonight, so I guess this doesn't work for me. My point is that I love dogs, I am so scared of dogs. I just want my property, I want to claim my property, and I just want you all to vote yes, because if you vote yes, you give me the right to claim back my property, and also to give me the freedom from being intimidated and aggravated by my neighbors and my neighbor's dog. Thank you.
I see quite a few people speaking, and at some point in time, someone's going to move the previous question. I want to make sure it's fairly debated on both sides. So I will take you, sir, as the next speaker, but while you are speaking, I'm going to ask you to line up so that the people who are in favor of this article speak from these microphones here. One, two, three. People who are in favor speak from these microphones. The people who are opposed speak from these three microphones. After you have spoken, sir. Thank you very much for your indulgence here, but I think it'll just balance the debate a little better. You, now, sir.
My name is Gib Metcalf. I live on Mohawk Drive. I think it's always a mistake to pass a law that's unnecessary, and I think it's a bigger mistake to pass one that creates a burden on the town. All of the kinds of problems we've heard tonight are really enforcement problems, as others have pointed out, and perhaps we need to deal with that. But the bigger problem, or an additional problem I see, is that we're changing the law which now says no animal to go at large to the injury or nuisance of others, which all these examples we've heard are enforcement problems with that. But in addition, we now have the possibility that there will be lots and lots of calls to the dog officer because the dog is merely outside of the property. It sounds like the dog officer is already overburdened, and it means we will have a harder time distinguishing between the real problems and the cases that aren't a problem. I'm going to vote against this.
Now, one from the pro side. I think this gentleman will stand longer.
Mr. Moderator, I'm pro. Am I at the right mic? Am I at the right mic?
Yes, sure.
Yes. Hi, I'm Bob McGinsky. I live at 9 Wampanoag Drive. I hope you'll pay attention to me. I had not intended to speak. I have, something compelled me this morning to get up here. I thought my motivation was entirely selfish, but providence occurred this morning, and I understand that this is a community issue, not just a Bob McGinsky issue. I left my Wampanoag Drive as I usually do. I turned on Inshoba. I plan to greet the three children, as I do every morning. I gazed a little longer at them this morning because I thought, poor kids, 21 degrees, nearly April, they're out there in the winter coats. I gazed a little too long, and as I made the next turn, behind a large tree, three large dogs, you heard my wife describe them, come flying down the middle of the road at me. I had a quick decision to make there. I missed the dogs by about two feet, I missed the children by about four feet, I missed the tree and myself by about 10 feet. Now, if you ever see me driving along on Route 2, if I really let my hair down and I'm acting totally mad, you'll see me flying by at about 51, 52 miles an hour. You might drive a little swifter than me. You might be in the seat that I was in this morning. Your children might have been four feet away from my car this morning. Your dogs might have been running to my car this morning. Mr. Moderator, I need two more brief points, please. Secondly, coming at you from left field, but I promise you my sights are on home plate with this one. Most of the greatest writers and philosophers in America grew up within 25 miles of where we stand tonight. Most of them, in fact, within 12 miles. And if you read them considerably, you'll find two themes quite prevalent in their writings. Number one is freedom. Number two, the American dream. Now, I don't know about you, but to me, American dream is focused very prominently on the right for me to own property and enjoy that property freely. Heard my wife describe six animals. Our names might be on the mortgage, but they own the property that we live in. My son has been ferociously attacked by a dog. He refuses, 11-years-old, to leave the house by himself. Now, I learned yesterday, we unanimously passed, almost every seat in the house was filled last night, we unanimously passed the sewer bill. I was very proud to be in Actonite at that moment, because as I looked at the eight regions of the sewer district, I ask your forbearance, please, Mr. Moderator, as I looked at those eight sewer districts, and even looking at the outer colored district, my property, and I'm sure that some of your properties, is closer to Hill Bop than it is to the Outer Eight Region. Yet, we sat here and unanimously passed that article because we knew in our hearts that it was good, and it was right, and it was fair. So I want to recycle to these poets. One of the greatest of them, Robert Frost, said that good fences make good neighbors. I don't think so. I think good neighbors make good neighbors. And in this case, it's a question of a neighbor respecting my right to my family's freedom on my property. For those neighbors who don't abide by a fundamental principle such as this, maybe good fences make good neighbors, maybe good leashes make good neighbors. Mr. Moderator, my last point, at the risk of absolute frivolity, but I tell you, I'm bringing this one home as well. I was encouraged that we voted also, I believe unanimously, to buy the Morrison property. I would submit to the town that if we do not pass the leash law tonight, through the fine property over on Wampanoag Drive that would be available to the property, there will not be a testy attorney on the opposite side of the city. It's currently zoned residential, but it is a dog recreation property, six animals, a lot of sewage live on the property. I know the sewers are coming down there, so we can handle that. But perhaps if we pass a leash law in this fine town, it might be inhabitable and enjoyable by the three fine Acton citizens that you have for you this evening. Thanks so much.
I'll take one from the con side now, in the back microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Klein, Old Stone Brook. I wonder if Mr. Kabokoff could confirm something I thought I heard him say, that there is a state law that in fact has more teeth in it than what we're proposing tonight?
That's absolutely true. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to reiterate it, I was just trying to figure out when. So you gave me my opportunity.
I assure you, this wasn't planned.
No. Although, in any event, yes, there is a state law. It's, I can, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's fairly specific, and it goes through the courts, and it has very specific admonitions in it against dogs in particular and running without being under control, as well as barking and biting, and it's very specific, and is, as most state laws are, kind of verbose. But it does give you a mechanism through the state court system, through hearings by a magistrate, actually, not a judge, at least in the beginning, to have your problems, give recourse to your problems. This bylaw would simply give a local solution before someone may choose to go the extra step up to the state.
Given that, with all due respect to the folks who want this, who I believe want something, you'll pardon the pun, well, maybe you won't, with teeth in it, then I would vote against this bylaw and endorse going through the recourse that the state has offered us, which is, according to the selectmen, a more powerful law.
I'm going to take some more people speaking here, but let me just try a sense of the meeting here. How many people know how they're going to vote? I'm not asking you which way. Okay. And put your hands down, please. And how many people as yet don't know how they're going to vote? Well, I think that should say something about how long we continue to discuss it. I'll take the gentleman in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Nick Capasso, 43 Maple Street. My wife and I moved to town about a year and a half ago, and in that admittedly brief period, we have witnessed numerous dogs defecate on our lawn and driveway. We have been prevented from walking down our street by barking and snarling dogs. And I've witnessed at least, no, not at least, I've witnessed two dogs being hit by automobiles. I'm fairly certain that if I were to relieve myself in my neighbor's yard, or bodily prevent one of my neighbors from walking down the street, or if I were to start running out in front of cars, the town would take very quick and effective action to prevent me from doing this. And I fail to understand why the town would allow, or would tolerate, this type of behavior from an animal when it won't tolerate it from a person. So I urge that we vote to approve Article 29. Thank you.
Mr. Gresher.
Mr. Moderator, I have a number of concerns about the changes to this new bylaw, or this bylaw. Firstly, there is the fundamental shift in what triggers action. We are moving from a trigger which involves some degree of nuisance or harm, and I don't think anybody would disagree that many of the horror stories that have been described tonight involve nuisance and harm, to one that involves lack of control, with no definition at all of what such lack of control means, which means it's very broad, and no context of what is the impact of that loss of control. So, for example, if my dog is two miles into Spring Hill Conservation Area and chases a squirrel, I would assume that is as much lack of control as if he runs across Route 27. I suggest there's a very different thing there. If my dog barks at a squirrel two miles into Spring Hill, that is, again, a lack of control, very different from if my dog, I let my, my dog tries to bark continuously and disturbs the neighborhood. If my dog pees on a tree out two miles in Spring Hill, according to, I believe, the original proponents who considered that soiling and defacing municipal property would be such an offense, so if my dog pees on a tree out in Spring Hill, that is also considered to be an offense. Now, I suggest that peeing on a tree two miles into Spring Hill is quite different from defecating on my neighbor's lawn on a continuous basis. In the latter case, that is a nuisance. This is the best, so the basic first complaint is we're moving away from something that involves nuisance to a very broad definition with no context of what the impact is. Now, there are some laws that are so broad. Most of our laws do involve some idea of nuisance and harm. Most of the laws which don't require an underlying nuisance or harm are very exceptional. We have the laws concerning possession of unregistered guns. Those were forced on us because there was a very large degree of crime concerned with guns and very severe consequences of crimes with guns. There's the blood alcohol and DUI. Again, very severe consequences, very large number of crimes. There's the question of speed limits. Again, speed kills. But in this particular case, remember, speed limits are different in different places. You don't have a universal statewide speed limit of 20 miles an hour, but you do have a speed limit of 20 miles an hour in a school area and 70 miles an hour on the highway. That is a question where you factor in the implications of harm. In this case, the changes to the bylaw would not, they would apply a general standard right across wherever the offense occurred, it's the same offense. The second concern is the question of the definition of what is lack of control. It's the meat of the issue. And in fact, the whole thing is, this is undefined here. How does this rewording change things? Why can't, if we're concerned about what are the offenses, let's change the existing bylaw to factor in, let's enforce the existing bylaw better? I am particularly extremely concerned that the definitions of this what is lack of control is not going to be done in public. It will be done quite arbitrarily, you know, without any degree of review. And therefore, again, we're talking about very broad, very broad application and a high risk of inconsistent application. The last point is that there are a very large number of open issues. Firstly, we've had the discussion of a breadth question. You know, the bylaw doesn't talk about dogs, it talks about animals. So, you know, are we going to have the question of, you know, if a horse poops on the trail, is that going to be an offense? The second question is, does it concern local or out-of-town dogs? The third thing is, who is responsible? Is it the owner or the handler? What happens if you've got an out-of-town handler with an in-town dog? What about in-town handlers and out-of-town dogs? What about minor handlers and owners? It's totally undefined, and I think it's unmanageable. So we have, again, a very high potential for inconsistent enforcement. I suggest that this is a very bad change to the bylaw, and I hope the town will vote it down.
I'm going to allow two more speakers, one pro and one con, and then we're going to have a vote.
Michael Vialas, 80 Wall Street. One of the questions is why this is an improvement on the nuisance law. One of the things is it's much easier to prove. As somebody pointed out, if it's a particular incident, it's very unlikely that you'll be able to prove that particular incident. If it's a particular animal, it's much easier to get a videotape of some animal that's roaming around being a nuisance at some other time, or just roaming around. And in terms of applying this law, I don't think anybody's going to take it to the Supreme Court and split hairs like the last gentleman suggested might be necessary. These are people who are dealing with this. In terms of why do this if we have a state law, again, is the question of escalation. First, you talk to your neighbors. First, you talk to your neighbors. Try and be reasonable. You make concessions, they make concessions. That's what most of us do. Then you find out that you either misunderstanding each other, or one of you is not being reasonable, or both of you. This law would allow us to deal with this in a more informal way, or in a, in a rather formal way within the town. We wouldn't have to go to the state law. We wouldn't have to go to those courts. And I am going to throw a little monkey wrench in here because I feel, although I feel there, there can at times be questions about cats, because they're, sometimes they're very detrimental to the health of children playing in areas where the, the cats have defecated. I think that primarily this is an issue, as everybody has talked about dogs. And I would like to try and get the people who are afraid their cats are going to be persecuted by this out of this situation by proposing an amendment. And this amendment is a simple amendment. It is to retain the original wording and to just slightly modify the wording that has happened here. The wording would read, the first sentence is the same as it was originally, "No person owning or keeping any animal in the town of Acton shall permit the animal to go at large to the injury or nuisance of others." I would change the addition to be, "In addition, a dog shall not go outside the boundaries of the property of its owner or keeper unless under the complete and effective control of said owner or keeper by means of a leash or otherwise." So this will make this addition specific?
Uh, I'd go, stop right there.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I get the amendment, then we need to second it, and then you can speak to it. Would you just give me the exact words you want to add as the amendment and where? After the word what, and what words do you add?
Well, it's a modification of the under, of what in our thing is underlying. The, the, the addition is after, after the wording of the original law that's now on the books, it, it ends up nuisance of others. After that, I get rid of the addition that was put in there. Well, I could modify, let's see, it's, it's too hard to modify. Yeah, no, instead of outside the boundaries, instead of the word outside, in there it goes, "In addition, a dog shall not go outside the boundaries of the property of its owner or keeper."
So, so-
And the only other change is, because people were objecting to the syntax of and not, I changed that to unless under, and not-
I'm going to stop you here. Would you come up and see the town council? It's getting very confusing. I'm having trouble following it. I'm sorry. Come up and see the town council if you want to make an amendment, because, no, if you want to do it, you're going to have to do it that way. I'm sorry.
I just have a, I, I'm not arguing with you, I just, if I do that, won't I end up reading the entire thing the way I read it here? No? Okay, I'll check-
See, we'll have the words the right way, the way you want them, and you're entitled to have the words the way you want them. It's just getting a little confusing, okay? And while he's doing that, I, some of you may remember, I don't want to make light of this, because this is pretty serious stuff, but at that microphone, I don't know, 10 or 12 years ago, a man got up and he was holding this young child in his arms, whose name was Mikey. And he gave this impassioned plea about how there was this huge dog in his area that was terrorizing his son. It was a friendly dog, but the dog was much bigger than his son, and it would wag his tail and knock his son down. And he said, "My dog is just, my son is just terrorized." And then at the end of this long speech, he put the son up in front of the microphone and said, "Tell him, Mikey." And the little kid said, "No, Daddy, that dog's my friend." It's a true story. So what do they say about out of the mouths of babes? We'll just take a, a couple of minute recess here while he gets the wording with his amendment Okay, good. We got it? Okay, we, we had a very short break. We'll now be back in session, and I will turn the microphone back to this gentleman so that he can make his amendment. Yeah.
Okay, the amendment is to retain the original wording of the, the existing law. And to the amendment the way it is, before the word outs, before the phrase outside the boundaries is added the phrase, "In addition, a dog shall not go." And later in there where it says, "and not," the words "and not" shall be removed and the word "unless" shall be put in. Now, would you like me to read the whole thing again?
Yes, yes. Read it as you want it, the whole thing.
The whole thing. "No person owning or keeping any animal in the town of Acton shall permit the animal to go at large to the injury or nuisance of others. In addition, a dog shall not go outside the boundaries of the property of its owner or keeper unless under the complete and effective control of said owner or keeper by means of a leash or otherwise."
Okay, just hold it one minute before we take a second. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the amendment was, was proper and idiosyncratic. Do I hear a second to the amendment? Okay, now we'll have some very brief discussion on the amendment. I, I think you have stated why you want it.
Yeah. And again, to make it specific to dogs, because that seems like that's the issue, it retains the link, the original language for people who are saying that nuisance should be kept in, that it's weakening it.
To the, now, we're only going to speak to the amendment. Mr. Cadillac?
To the amendment. I know there are problems such as, I don't know the gentleman who mentioned how he has problems with neighborhood dogs, I can give you my horror stories, I won't. The problem, as has already been said, is enforcement. The problem with this amendment, well-intentioned as it is, as well as with the original bylaw, as well as with the original proposal to change the bylaw, is none of it works. We're going to start all over again. It doesn't really solve the problem, so I'm going to vote against it to make life simple. I'm going to vote against the amendment, as well-intentioned as it is, because it does not address the fundamental issues, which is what to do with an unreasonable animal and/or dog owner, and the dog officer, as it stands right now, will do nothing different from what is being done now, which is very little. So we have to solve this problem differently, perhaps next year, start all over again. This will not do it. We might as well move on and vote this down.
The gentleman at the back.
I'm David Carr from 815 Main Street, and I stand here quite embarrassed today, kind of with my tail between my legs. I live across the street from Mr. Liberty, and through the grapevine, I've heard that my dog was responsible for initiating this. Mr. Liberty has never spoken to me about this problem. My daughter had dinner at his house last night, and I go to pick her up, bringing my dog. And he has never mentioned to me that he finds the dog objectionable. I find it, I only learned of, of a neighbor who enjoys playing with my dog. All the neighborhood kids, except for one, comes to my yard to play with a dog. And, and I have adjoining neighbors that share the same backyard. And when I got my dog, I went to my neighbors and I asked them about putting a fence up. I wanted to put a fence up. My neighbors did not want me to put a fence up because it was out of character with the neighborhood. So-
Excuse me, let me, let me interrupt you here. I really don't think you're speaking to the amendment, and we're here just to discuss the amendment that was made and, and not the issue that you're bringing up. A serious issue you're bringing up, but it isn't really to the amendment, and you pointed that out, and you're absolutely correct.
Well, can I speak to the amendment?
Yeah, if you speak to the amendment, yes.
Well, if this law's, if this law's, bylaw is going to pass, I'm very much in favor of the amendment because I do have a cat, and, and I would hate to have my cat not be able to eat the rodents in the neighborhood. And I think it would be, there are bees that are kept by a beekeeper down the road, and I'd hate to have to see him keep bees on a leash.
We're bordering on the frivolous now, we, we talked about that earlier.
Well, so, I would expect equal protection under the law. So if I made a complaint about the bees or about the cats, so I would, I'm strongly in favor of the amendment.
Let's see, Dr. Don, are you standing at the microphone? You're not? Oh. I was going to say doggone it, but I won't. Mr. Liberty?
I, I do want to address the amendment. As a quick point of personal privilege, I do want to say that my neighbor is well-intentioned but misinformed of the law.
No, I'm sorry, I don't want to, no, 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 no.
I'm sorry, but my understanding of the rules is that, having been, I mean, one sentence on a point of personal issue-
Mr. Liberty, Mr. Liberty, I'm not going to let you go forward anymore.
Fine, I'll go forward on the amendment.
On the amendment only.
Yes, sir. Then let me say this. I worked with the Board of Selectmen to draft the amendment. I did not feel it was necessary to correct everybody that this was not my wording, however, the amendment more closely reflects what we attempted to do. I don't think it's helpful or on point to the amendment to talk about the history, although there have been some misunderstandings about the history, but I do think that this amendment would be effective. I do think that this amendment would get us closer to what we were trying to accomplish. I believe the Board of Selectmen, when they tell me that they will act in good faith to interpret this in the best interest of all the parties, and that this will empower them to be more effective, and so I urge both the support of the amendment and the original bill. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to allow two more speakers on the amendment, and then that will be hit. Who wishes to speak to the amendment? All the people who are standing? You have not spoken at all yet, ma'am, have you? Either two, the amendment or the main motion. Then I'm going to give you one of the two slots.
Catherine Black, 237 Central. Mr. Moderator, I keep my cats on a leash when they go outside, and I move the previous question.
You may.
Second.
Moved and seconded to cut off debate on the amendment. All in favor of cutting off debate on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Debate is cut off. We are now voting, we're now dealing with the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Let me, let me see you stand. Would you please be seated, and would all opposed to the amendment, please stand? Would you please be seated? I am going to declare that the amendment has passed. Just for information, I counted about 125 people who were in favor and about 55, 60 who were opposed. So I don't think it was that close. If it was close, I would have had to tell us, count it. Now we have an amended motion. I get, let two more people speak, and then we'll vote. Two more on the, two more.
I'm going to amend, I'd like to amend the amended motion.
You're not going to speak? This gentleman.
I'm speaking, Eric Husted, Pope Road. I'm speaking against the motion, even as it is amended. The language is still ambiguous. It's less of a leash law and more of an invisible fence law. You are dealing with all of the ambiguities which were already brought up, and they're still there. All you've done is just remove cats from it, or put it to dogs, but still, it's not really an effective law or an effective bylaw as it is. That's all.
And you, you have not spoken at all, have you, yet, ma'am? All right, you will be the last speaker. I'll ask a question after you speak.
Miriam Lezak, High Street. I was not entirely comfortable with the original proposal, although I was going to vote for it. With the amendments, it makes me very comfortable. I'm, I'm a cyclist, I have a child who's afraid of dogs. I think, you know, being able to be around Acton and knowing that dogs need to be under some sort of control, if it's voice control, that's fabulous, that's great. But they need to be under control, and the way it, with the amendment, I think it's pretty clear that you don't have to leash your chickens and your bees. But you do have to keep control of your dogs, and it really, this, this makes me very happy. Thank you.
Okay, before we, before we vote, I, I want a raise of hands. How many people right now don't know how they're going to vote? All right, everybody, just, just a couple of people. I think most everybody is ready to vote, and so we will vote. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Yeah, sure. Where do we begin voting? Ms. Cho, would you tell me when the, Ms. Cho, Bell? Bell, would you tell me when you're ready to start counting? We're ready to vote. Please display the card that you have. They will only count the, the cards, people with cards. Would all in favor of the amendment- Would all in favor of the amended motion, please stand and stay standing until your tellers tell you to sit down. Okay, I think we're ready to count the noes now, are we? We have the count. The count is one hundred and sixty-two, yes. Ninety-five, no. The motion has carried. We'll move on to Article thirty.